Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on July 28, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilmember Glover is going to lead in the invocation, and Councilmember Jones is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we are meeting here tonight to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Father, let it be the mercy of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim? Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening, and we have two people signed up to speak at public forum. So we'll start with Brandy Smith. Ms. Smith?
My name is Brandy Smith, and I have been a citizen of the city of Park City since 1997. I moved here when I was seven years old. My grandfather Cecil Chance, known as Butch, as most people fondly know him, managed the park from 97 to 2009. I've seen many council members come and go. I've seen mayors change hands. I've seen the police, Chief of Police change hands many times. I am proud to live in this city. I'm proud to raise my children here. Forgive me, I'm pregnant, so hormones come and go. I was excited when I saw and heard about the homeowners grant program, because I feel like our city has kind of been neglected in some of the housing areas. And so I was excited to see citizens have a, you know, a reason to want to improve their properties. I've seen this city grow. And so to see these, you know, incentives for these improvements, it warmed my heart. Until I started reading on the applications, and each one was the same time and time again. I have in front of me the application for the exterior paint program, which is going on right now. And on it, it states that the applicant may not own more than one property, and applicants must own and reside in the property to be painted. The exterior paint program is for single-family dwellings, however, it excludes no multifamily dwellings, duplexes, rental properties, or mobile homes. I am saddened by this, because I am a mobile homeowner. I live at Lot 100 Navajo in the mobile home parks. I started to purchase my home back in March of 2017 from my grandfather for $10,000 cash, and I just recently paid it off back in April. So I own the home free and clear from him. And I've grown up in that mobile home. I've grown up in that mobile home park. So I was saddened that not only am I being excluded as a homeowner over there, but the other homeowners as well. There are new families who have moved in. One of them is a dear friend of mine, that they are currently purchasing their home from Bay Shore Home Properties. But there are those of us who've lived over there for years that own our homes and take pride in our homes. I can provide exactly what the checklist requires. I can provide a current water bill. I can provide proof that I own the home, as I have the bill of sale, and I can provide a filled-out application. What I am asking tonight, and going forward, is that us mobile homeowners who can provide ownership of our homes, please be included in these programs. Because the last thing we want to feel like is that we don't matter, and that because of our choice of home is not brick and mortar that we are second class. We're proud to be in Park City. I'm proud to raise my children here. I met my husband here, actually. And I work here. I work for A+ Trucking. I shop at Leakers. I very rarely leave the city unless it's to go into Wichita to go visit my grandparents, who sadly live in Wichita, and I wish they would move back. So I'm asking that we please be included, not only this one, but any futures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next one, is it Jamie, or Jane?
And I'm not certain if this issue is on the agenda and being worked on presently or not. I own the property at 1700 Rubina East Street across from the park. And for years now, kind of gone back and forth about the maintenance of the ditch during regular mowing of Park City and hydraulic. And it's been very inconsistent, and I've been told a multitude of things about my responsibility as the owner of Sunny Slope Edition Lots 1 and 2. I went to the courthouse to obtain what the easements actually are, and found it a little remarkable. I have bilateral cataracts and can't see very well, but it goes from, as appearance-wise, as we turn 61st going north on hydraulic, there's 120 feet, and then it comes down to where my two lots are, right across from the park, at 50, and then it broadens back out to 60. And when I first purchased the property or moved in there, the east side, the south side, and the north side, the north side was actually more well-maintained. The east side was poorly maintained. The south side was practically not maintained at all. It looked like residual floodwaters. So Park City in general has done a good job of cleaning it up. And now it seems like, just recently, in the last mowing and conversations we've had out there with different city officials, the hydraulic west side isn't being maintained at all. So the purpose of my standing before you tonight is to ask exactly what is my responsibility? What is Park City's responsibility? And what are the utilities' responsibilities? Because it's almost unobtainable to find somebody who wants to risk their life being paid to mow this watershed ditch area. And if I'm to do it, or even someone else, whose liability is it from quote-unquote "the center of the street" to what I was told in one meeting, you know, my front door, which the door doesn't face, but the side of my property? So I just want some clarification, and I hope that we can work a little better together, because I'm not from Park City, and I moved here after several bad situations to patronize your city and bring my, what was business here. And I can't do it alone. And I'm kind of disappointed in what I've heard from one, and then it's been done or not done by another, and it's not as welcoming or aesthetically pleasing as I would hope it to be when I purchased the property. The property sat vacant, I guess, and in the name of community, I guess, I want to see it all aesthetically as pleasing as possible.
Okay.
Would you guys like a copy of these?
I think-
What I obtained from City Hall?
You can hand it to Sean.
And then this is the description of it.
And then Sean, can you, we'll reach out to you this week, and we'll schedule a meeting, and we'll sit down and discuss it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That was the last person that we had for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple things, quickly. First of all, 61st Street Bridge construction, it is complete. By close of business this week, they should be starting pavement markings, as well as cleaning up the adjacent area and starting to seed it. Should be completely done within a couple weeks, but as far as the construction portion, that is done. Update on Quick Shop, had been proposed, been brought before planning and zoning in this council. They have had some change in ownership of the corporation itself, not of the property owner, but the corporation. The first week of August, final plans should be submitted to the city, and then they'll be looking to close within 30 days after that, so that's good news. I know now this has been three or four meetings back-to-back that we have talked about the CARES Act funding with the county, and still waiting on guidance from that county and that special commission. We are hoping that tomorrow, the Board of Cedric County Commissioners will be holding a special meeting related to CARES Act funding, and hopefully we'll get some clarification on that. As soon as we do, I'll make certain that that gets out appropriately to council. Earlier, Ms. Smith had indicated about the exterior grant program. I will say that tonight in the appropriations, there is a total of 16 payments going out to homeowners, and we still have 17 applications in process, people that have been approved but are still in the process of making improvements. And then as far as the exterior paint program, council directed last meeting that we go ahead and revise the application, which we did, to take off the demographics information. And so far, we've used, or we've received, one of those applications. And it is a growing curve, because we have realized, just in looking at that application, there are some things that are a little bit challenging that we're going to work through with this particular homeowner, so that way, going forward, we can make certain that the program's running smoothly.
And I think we wanted to bring that back at the next meeting with maybe some possible recommendations for some changes.
Yes, sir. Be happy to.
Okay. Is it? Go ahead, Sean.
I know we're probably all thinking the same thing, just to be clear, though, what she was asking about the mobile home grant, is that when we'll discuss it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other questions for you, Sean? So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to new business, item seven, which is discuss and consider the approval of the delinquent recycling and trash accounts, and setting the public hearing date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. KSA 65-3410 allows cities to assess delinquent recycling and trash fees to properties excluding any unpaid amounts that have been billed in the last 60 days. A list of the proposed amounts to be assessed to properties is included in the council packets. The statute requires holding a public hearing to hear any objections or protest letters, excuse me, or protests. Letters will be mailed to the property owners at least 10 days prior to the hearing date to notify them of the date, time, and place of the hearing. Staff recommends holding the hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on August 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM, in order to meet the county's August 25 deadline for assessments. After the hearing, council will then be asked to consider a resolution to approve the report of delinquent fees to be assessed against the properties. You have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Brandy?
Marlo, on this list, it looks like some of the people are the same from last year. Are these the majority of the same people year over year?
Three of the four are the same as last year.
And how, and these, so we normally pay our sewer, this one's sewer, right?
This one is water, or trash and recycling that we're talking about.
The trash, the trash goes on our water bill, so how come these people don't pay through their water bill? Are they on well water?
Correct. They don't have city water, so they just pay on, their bills only include trash recycling and the stormwater fee. They're not on city water.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is our typical annual thing that we go through each year around this time. Anybody else? Brandy?
I move to approve the list of delinquent recycling and trash accounts and establish August 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM to meet for the purpose of hearing any objections or protests to the respective assessments.
Second. John? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider approval of the delinquent stormwater accounts and setting a public hearing date.
Marlo?
Resolution number 990-2018, adopted by this council in April 2018 to establish stormwater fees, provides authorization to assess delinquent stormwater fees to properties. Unpaid amounts that have been billed in the last 60 days have been excluded. A list of the proposed amounts have been, to be assessed, to the properties have been included in the council's packets. A public hearing must be held to hear any objections or protests, and letters will be mailed to the property owners at least 10 days prior to the hearing date to notify them of the date, time, place, and of the hearing. Staff recommends holding the hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on August 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM, in order to meet the county's August 25 deadline for assessments. After the hearing, the council will then ask, be asked to consider a resolution to approve the report of delinquent fees to be assessed against the properties. And this is for stormwater only.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Brandy?
I don't have any questions, so I'll make a motion to approve the list of delinquent stormwater accounts and establish August 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM to meet for the purpose of hearing any objections or protests to the respective assessment.
And Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider a resolution for the sale and conveyance of certain properties to F&amp;L Rentals LLC. Dominic?
Good evening. Dominic Eck with Gilmore &amp; Bell, bond counsel to the city. Thank you for having us. The first item I have for you tonight is just what the mayor read. It's the resolution which will convey the property purchased with the Series 2019 Industrial Revenue Bonds that the city issued for the F&amp;L Rentals project, which is the Harper Camper Land project. It will convey that property to the company. The bonds have matured. There was no property tax abatement related to this project, and so the final step in the process is to transfer the city's interests to the company. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ben?
It's pretty simple there, so I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 1047-2020, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to F&amp;L Rentals LLC.
And Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero. And that brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider an ordinance authorizing taxable industrial revenue bonds to Six Rentals LLC. Dominic?
Thank you. The Six Rentals project is nearing completion. The council adopted a resolution of intent to issue these bonds previously. The estimated and expected amount is $500,000. There will be a two-year of property tax exemption at 100% for each year. The third year, 25% will be abated, and then going forward, there will be no property tax abatement following that third year. That means the bonds will be outstanding for those three years until the property tax abatement wears off. As a reminder, there is no financial obligation to the city here. The sole obligation is to pass through any, money is received by renting the facility to Six Rentals and pass it along to the bond owner, which will also be Six Rentals. I believe Mr. Thomas might be in attendance tonight, if you have any questions on the project, or if you have any questions on the process, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone from the council have any questions? Brandy?
I don't have any questions, so I move to approve ordinance number 1104-2020, an ordinance authorizing the city of Park City, Kansas, to issue taxable industrial revenue bond Series 2020, Six Rentals LLC project, for the purpose of paying and cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero. That brings us to item 11, which is discuss and consider an ordinance authorizing taxable industrial revenue bonds to Murdoch Properties LLC.
Thank you. Similar to the Six Rentals project, this Murdoch Properties project is nearing completion or complete, and so we are ready to issue the bonds for that. This project was part of a $25 million resolution of intent that the city council adopted back in 2018, related to the Air Capital family of companies. And the project will have a 10-year tax abatement with a pilot payment each year of just north of $6,000. Happy to answer any questions that council may have on this project.
Brandy?
Can you remind me what, where the location of this one is?
This one is on 69th Street, just west of I-135, on the north side of the road.
Okay. Ben?
Sir, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance 1105-2020, an ordinance authorizing the city of Park City, Kansas, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond Series 2020 for Murdoch Properties LLC project for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero. Thank you very much, Dominic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in this evening. That brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider an ordinance for the street name change from Wild West Court and Athens Court to Jackpot Way. Doug?
Mayor and Council, first thing, I didn't catch this when I reviewed the agenda, but this isn't an ordinance, and you may have seen that from the package that you have. This is a request by the Wyandotte Nation to change the name of a street or a cul-de-sac. And as you can see from the staff summary sheet, this little cul-de-sac has been named twice in the past. It was named first Athens Court under a plat of the Coliseum Center Edition, and then subsequently was named Wild West Court when the Wild West Edition was platted several years ago. The action tonight is for you to consider the proposed name change that the Wyandotte Nation has requested from those two names to Jackpot Way. The process for doing this is if you approve this by a vote, then the mayor would be authorized to sign affidavits, and there are two of them here, because they're the two names. And then that would officially change the name of the cul-de-sac to Jackpot Way.
Sean, I know Chief Friend called you, and if you want to add anything additional to that?
No, sir. They had just specifically reached out and were not part of Wild West World, and didn't feel that it made sense to maintain it that way. Relatively straightforward as far as the name change. We looked at Cedric County's addressing manual, and it does allow for what you would call a vanity name. This cul-de-sac is all of about 150 foot long. This would be the only property address on that cul-de-sac, so it does not impact any existing businesses or future businesses, other than that of the Wyandotte Nation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? John?
Oh, access to the proposed casino will be through this.
Talking with Chief Friend, this is the little cul-de-sac proposed, because it's not even constructed yet, but it is directly behind the Cedric County Fire Department. The Wyandotte Nation has also indicated that eventually they would like to create another access point into the property off of hydraulic, anticipating traffic. But again, that is further downrange, once they figure out how they would like to develop the rest of the property outside the 10 acres.
I guess I just kind of wondered, too, not necessarily for the cul-de-sac one, but it looks like the main drag that's going in there is also Wild West Drive, but maybe at some point we need to discuss that one as well. But I guess right now, we don't have much of a plan yet for what's going to happen, but while we're talking about it, I guess, just in case it pops up later off the table, I wouldn't think.
And that would be a prerogative of council, if they made that request in the future. This was the one that they wanted to initially get out, and like I said, it didn't impact any existing businesses, which is usually the challenge that you face when you're trying to change a street. You've got to pay for everything to get changed over and replace business cards, stationery, and all that, and this one, there's not a single address yet of either one of them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Jim?
I'm going to be in favor of removing Wild West World from any names out there on any of the streets, but you answered it, I think, but just to very specifically say the hotel is not affected. They're on a different court.
That is correct. Motel 6 is currently on Wild West Drive.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the hotel was good with it, too, since they were already there and it didn't affect them.
Okay. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Ben?
Sir, I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the street name change as presented from Wild West Court slash Athens Court to Jackpot Way.
Okay. Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question.
Tom?
The way that the post office is doing cul-de-sacs now, they name them off of a main street, and they're just a little finger off the main street, so would there be any opportunity for them to come back and name, rename that street? I mean, if you do addressing now, the addresses all follow down through the cul-de-sac and back around, and that's why all the cul-de-sacs have same names as the main street coming through. I'm just wondering if the post office will give us any trouble on this.
I do not believe that they would, sir. There are some that don't automatically line up.
Right.
And like I said, at some point in time in the future, the Wyandotte Nation could come back to this council and make that request at that time, if they wanted to change the street name from Wild West Drive to something else.
I'm not opposed to this. We've done it before for other companies, so, and property owners, but I just, there's a wrinkle there that may be affected somewhere down the road, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that motion passes seven one. That brings us to governing body reports, and we'll start with Jim.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Brandy?
I don't have anything.
George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I've got something that I meant to talk about a couple months ago, and I forgot. There's a second council member that we lost back in the end of May, Bill Judd, for those that didn't remember or didn't hear about it. This council at one time-
Uh, this council at one time was really interesting because we had Olin Heever, who was an English teacher and some other stuff at Heights on the council. And we had Olin, or uh, Bill Judd, who was physics and math and chemistry and all that at the same time. And it was very interesting council meetings because they corrected English and they corrected your math. And we had some pretty good debates. And I, I'm just kind of sad to see Bill gone now, so. Uh, if you ever tripped through uh, Liquors, he'd be sitting back in the morning eating breakfast and he was always willing to talk to somebody. And uh, just an interesting person. I just wanted to let everybody know that I had read that and I kept forgetting to, to bring it up. So, but I wanted to bring it up tonight. And the other thing is Chambers got a meeting tomorrow and Sean's our speaker. So if anybody's interested in going?
It's going to be a great one too.
Pardon?
It's going to be a good one too.
Yep.
Melvin?
I have nothing.
Ben?
I am good.
George?
Yeah. For those folks who are undoubtedly losing their last unemployment check, it's the end of this month. I have some information for you. Uh, help with rent utility payments due to COVID-19. Cedric County Emergency Assistance Program is still helping those folks that have been involved or had problems due to COVID. I want to give them a phone number. It's 316-462-3775 for those folks who still need help with rent and/or utilities. There's also a, a housing voucher program. It used to be called Section 8. It's called Housing Voucher Program now. And it's available at 455 North Tenth, North Main Street, downtown on the 10th floor. Phone number is 462-3700. So if we have folks who are going to be evicted coming up or, or needing help in any way with a place to stay or live, those are resources that you can use. And as always, trust in the Lord. Thank you.
Sean, can we add those to social media, Facebook?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. John?
I have nothing. I'm glad Tom let us know about it. I did not know about Bill Judd.
Remember those days, don't you?
Yeah. Great, great guy. I think his last words on the bench, uh, when he lost the election, he said, "Well, the citizens have spoken. Damn them." And he got up and walked off. He was just a great guy. Bad deal. Thank you. Uh, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not send any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you.